One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so this first portion here that we're gonna do is for the Nobles Lake. So we're gonna open up session as trustees to accept the Sunquist Engineering Engineers Report for the 2019 flood repairs. Hey, whoever's on the phone, can you please mute your phone?
Hey, whoever's on the phone, can you please mute your phone?
Whoa. Oh, that was the YouTube.
Oh, that was the YouTube.
That was on the...
Did someone on their phone is watching the video?
I think, oh.
So, it's someone that's on the phone.
I think I can mute. They just need to...
Just hang up the phone. I've done the stupid thing. Is someone on there that needs to talk to us?
Let's get that over with and I can mute it. There. Might have been one.
I'll make the motion to accept the engineers' report and set the public hearing for September 8, 2020, for the South Nobles Lake District.
Okay, a motion is a second?
I'll second it.
A motion is second? Any discussion on this? All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
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 Aye. The motion carried. You have a motion to go.
You got that, Linda?
To go out of session, please, guys. Ellen?
Huh?
Then do we just go back to our...
Just go back into the board.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to the actual board meeting. And first on the agenda, we have the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Alright, so first, we have a public hearing on the issuance of notes not to exceed eight million in general obligation look option sales and service tax bond. Provide funds to pay for costs of acquisition of land and the construction of equipping county shops to service secondary roads and approve and sign resolution sixty-nine twenty-twenty, instituting proceedings to take additional action. Is there a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, I got to, I meant to call Wickman.
Becky, that's just a regular motion, that's not a...
Hey, Tim, it's Justin. We just, we entered the board meeting. We're in a public hearing right now on the secondary roads, general obligation look option sales tax and services bond.
No, I know, it's a resolution.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so we're in a public hearing right now. Is there any real call?
On that?
Hello, did you?
No, I, Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisor Groby.
Yes.
Bell. Drake.
Hi.
Wickman, are you on? No.
Tim, are you voting to go into public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this resolution sixty-nine twenty-twenty? And Becky on this all?
These are just the process. We still haven't made any confirmed commitments till we see.
Giving us the authority to issue up to Mavixy that amount.
But we haven't seen the stuff back from Maggie on these to see what the numbers are gonna look like.
Right, and these are, on this one in particular, has to do with the engineers' office, and it could be, even if, when we, when we issue still yet this year with our other projects, could be part of this eight million, be an issuance next, this goal for another part of it, but this is to get the proceedings for giving us the authority.
Yeah, we're getting ready to go.
Hey, Tim, I'm not sure if you can hear that, but basically, these are, this is just essentially to give us the op, the ability to exercise these bonds if we so choose, so.
Yeah, correct. I think all of them are that way. I think we have like twelve or thirteen of them that we're working with. So, I understand, yep, moving forward.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Got a motion to the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Yes.
Bell.
Aye.
Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to...
We do just have one piece of procedure to ask the auditor if there were any written objections filed by any county residents that we are, we did not...
I haven't seen any. I didn't clean off my desk this morning.
So, we want to make, I'll make a motion to approve and authorize Board to sign Board Resolution sixty-nine twenty-twenty. As resolution entitled, said resolution is set out as...
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a second. Real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Yes.
Bell. Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay, this next one is authorization of a loan agreement in the issuance of notes not to exceed nine hundred thousand in general obligation loan, capital loan notes, in order to provide funds to pay for costs of equipping, remodeling, and reconstruction of public buildings, including equipping courthouse with access control and video surveillance, and the jail with camera upgrades for essential county purposes, and to approve and sign resolution number seventy dash twenty-twenty, instituting proceedings to take additional action.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Real call, please.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay, so we have a public hearing. Any comments from the public on this one? Again, this is just to have the ability to do so, right, Becky?
Yep.
That is correct.
Okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Yes.
Bell.
Aye.
Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Do we have to do the, whatever, any written protest?
Correct, same thing.
Okay, can you, in the future, let's make sure she puts it on the gen, on our script for us, so we're good to go.
It's in the sheets, but yeah, we'll ask her to.
So no written protest received?
There were nor, no oral.
No oral.
So looking for a motion to...
To approve Board Resolution seventy dash twenty-twenty?
Yep.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second? I think Tim did.
Real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Yes.
Bell. Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay, that's passed. Now we're looking to go on authorization loan agreement in the issuance of notes not to exceed six hundred thousand in general obligation capital loan notes in order to provide funds to pay for the cost of equipping, remodeling, or reconstruction of public buildings, including equipping the jail programmable logic control upgrades for the essential county purposes, and to approve the signed resolution seventy-one twenty-twenty, instituting proceedings to take additional action.
Motion to open public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Gro, Groby.
Yes.
Drake.
Aye.
Bell. Wickman.
Aye.
Okay, any comments from the public on this one? Any written objections or support?
Motion to close public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay, now I need approval of the resolution.
Seventy-one.
Wickman.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Yes.
Bell. Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Bye, sir. Have a good day.
Okay.
Alright, that is that. Uh, I don't have a timestamp for this one, do I? Okay. Next, we have Matt Wyon, Director of Planning and Zoning, and Pam Kelsner, Acting Director, Planning and Development. Public hearing continued from July fourteenth of twenty twenty. Looks like there's some... Matt, I have on here city council boss annexation agreement regarding the parcel number seven four four three one seven, one seven six zero zero six, and it's also known as one three six six seven one hundred ninety-second Street, and the city's petition for voluntary annexation.
So, do we need a motion to reopen the public hearing?
It's still open.
It's still open.
Okay, 'cause that's what it has on here, I just...
So, uh, we, we continued the meeting last week because we were waiting on the signed documents from both the developer and the city of Council Plus. We now have those two documents signed. That would be the city's annexation agreement and the voluntary annexation agreement signed by the developer. And there was some terms that they worked out between the city and the developer, which at the point, the point in time, we were just making sure that it was originally talked about that they were not gonna annex them in unless they got sewer within two hundred feet of the property. The documents didn't quite state that because, you know, this would happen over a year ago. It's been a project that's been worked on, at least since two thousand seventeen. But we now have all those documents signed, city sappy, developers happy, and now we can move forward with our joint agreements for the TIF district and be able to have this small industrial development kickoff here, hopefully.
The way, the way I read that, the, the tip, the agreement is that we can only, this is a one-time tip for us.
On the joint agreement, yes, so.
So the amount is whatever it is, then the city doesn't want us to go beyond, or that's what the agreement says.
We'd have to go back to the city and try to, try to talk with them more. If we had a big project come in that...
Right, but is that why you read that too?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then there's a graduated scale on the, on the tip if they annexed it before, what, twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, there's a graduated scale on what they would do for him tax-wise.
If it was before twenty...
If it was before twenty twenty-six.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I, that's what, that's why I thought I read that. I just wanted to...
Yeah.
Clear, I mean, because there's a bunch of those other documents mingled in there, so.
So we took the total amount of the project, subtracted the rise grant from it, and then, uh, that's where they came up with the nine hundred thousand, you know, we just tipped it out. At one time, that gives us a little bit of cushion room, about a hundred fifty thousand or so. And then, that, that will be it for the tip. But I tried to explain in the way the county does, our tips is different than what they have done and what they do in the city. Our developers don't actually ever receive any of those tip funds from us. It's project-based. Like, the tip that we would be doing is project-based to the road. And so it was, there were just different concepts that we had to get back and forth.
And then, um, are they, are they still wanting to review that pro, those parcels then?
So they put some stipulations in there on, just to do an administrative review...
Okay.
Over there to look at it, but, uh, it would just go through our process of planning commission, and then on to board supervisors for approval.
On the lot, on the additional lot?
On the lots.
As lots gets old.
Just on the subdivision as a whole. Once final plan is done, their review is done, our review is...
Okay, we haven't done, I thought we did, we haven't done final plan.
We've done preliminary, we've done final.
Okay.
They're working, they're very close to final.
Fair. So do we need a motion to close public hearing then?
Well, there's another piece on there about the resolution fifty-nine twenty-twenty.
But do we have to close public hearing before that?
Yeah, so that's the order of business, I guess, would be to close public hearing, approve that, and then also exhibit one to fifty-nine twenty-twenty, and then exhibit C, which is a joint city-county agreement. So, this lady just has something...
So, the exhibit C, joint, uh, city and county agreement, we have that here. It's been signed by the mayor and the city clerk. We have to do the same, uh, to where board supervisors passes and approves it, Chairman Schultz signs off on it, auditor, and then, um, it'll be the same for the resolution. What's that?
Adopting this.
Yep.
So, we will close the public hearing, then we'll approve the signing of the resolution in exhibit one and exhibit C. Is that what we're gonna do?
Well, you approved the resolution, so that is exhibit one, and then...
But do we close the public hearing for...
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay, so we got a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Uh, real call, please.
Chairman Schultz. Supervisors Groby.
Aye.
Bell. Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay, closed public hearing.
So now do you need a motion to approve Board Resolution fifty-nine twenty then?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Wickman, the second. Uh, real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried.
That includes the exhibit one, right?
Correct.
And, uh, exhibit C?
It's a separate, we separate motion.
The what?
Uh, well, she included, that's why I'm confused.
No, okay, so the exhibit C, you want a motion to approve the, uh, joint agreement between the county and the city?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Aye.
Bell.
Aye.
Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, next we have Matt again, with the second consideration ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one, in ordinance to amend chapter eight of the Potawatomi County Iowa zoning ordinance by adding a provision that commercial kennels, veterinarian hospitals, or clinics are a conditional use of the A-three district and to adopt said ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero one into law.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, real call.
Chairman Schultz.
Aye.
Supervisors Groby.
Aye.
Bell. Drake.
Aye.
Wickman.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, next on here we have Drew Rowe, A new one. Is that MP Dodge or D? Okay, she's MP Dodge, so I said that. MP Dodge Real Estate, map of Yale Lynn Berths. Uh, Leanne Gifford, or Patrick Sandag, Assistant County Attorney. Discussion decision on the issue of correcting title to property located at one 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 four Military Avenue, parcel number seven five four four two five one seven six zero zero two, legally described as Roar Park Second Edition, um, part O L C adjacent on west of lot eleven, block three.
Uh, Pat's here.
You guys have anything you wanna say about this one, or?
Good morning. I think this is more of a matter that the current property owners acquired this twenty by sixty tract roughly by a deed that was from last year, basically, but before that, they didn't own it. The city, excuse me, strike that. The county acquired this strip back in nineteen ninety-one by a tax sale deed, and public records ever since have shown that the county owns the property. I think that the relief that perhaps is being requested is that the county considers somehow selling, conveying, or transferring the tract to the, to the owners present. I believe that's the purpose of Drew being here.
Okay.
So, did, did it orig, I don't know, I don't know, I read it all. It, was it originally part of that parcel, and then it got switched somewhere along the line?
From what I can tell, this outlot C has been a, a, you know, a self-standing tract ever since, whatever. I mean, I, I did limited research on the matter.
Okay.
And, uh, there are just a few lots along that strip there, and, and basically, this area is right next to, I think, Sturniel Park, the, so the, and I think it's kind of a tree, a treat area, the buffering between the city and, and this lot in this particular outlot. But everything that I can tell from my limited research is that this outlot C had kind of been a standalone property, and again, back in nineteen ninety-one, I think at that time, it, it had been owned by a a hundred realty at that time, and, and again, it was basically conveyed to the county for a tax sale purpose, so.
So is it sitting in the treasurer's office now, and nobody's bought the sale? I mean, or who's, who's actually the...
Well, it's been recorded as, uh, my, my client, the Johnny Gale Lambert Living Trust, uh, as the owners of the parcel, but it hasn't been conveyed. Uh, there's a break in title. And so we are trying to get conveyance for this outlot C to carry on to the next homeowners.
So is that the recommendation from legal then?
Pat Sandag is actually handling this.
Well, again, at your discretion, obviously, the, the, uh, obviously, I don't think there's any benefit necessarily for the county to be owning this small strip of land, uh, and again, and again, I, I don't know what maintenance and so forth the owners have provided to this strip ever since. They've owned it for roughly, what, twenty years, I, I think? And again, I don't know what the city has done in conjunction to it, because again, the city property abuts this strip as well. But it would be appropriate, obviously, if the board wanted to consider conveying it, that the county could offer a, a quitclaim deed at the appropriate time.
I'll make a motion that the county do just that, as recommended by legal.
Okay, got a motion to do a quitclaim deed on that property? Is there a second?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll second it, um...
Second, good discussion.
Yeah. So, I can't, there's nothing owed on it then, right, or is there?
Didn't years ago, didn't counties used to take titles to some of those properties?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had to. We had to at the tax sale.
Well, no, we, well, we never had to take title and put it in the county's name, but we ended up being the, what do you wanna say, the, the holder of it? Because once we took title, then...
Yeah, I mean, but I...
Some of it, we actually took title.
Oh, I know what we did.
Yeah.
And we got some clips out there that we, we counted on.
This is probably one of those little tiny strips, so.
Okay.
And, and I do believe for clarification that there, there might have to be technically a public hearing set on this matter before it can officially go through a resolution and, oh, by the quitclaim deed as appropriate.
Okay. So we don't need to set that public hearing now, then?
Yes.
I think it, it should be set, yes.
Okay, so Marilyn, your motion would be to, uh, do, uh, the issuance of this parcel, um, to the adjacent parcel, and then set public hearing for, do we have to do some kind of notices, ten and twenty or anything, or? You got any idea?
Do you know on that?
Off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I think that's only a four-day notice, isn't that, on land?
We'll, we'll have to look. Better, um, but we are flexible. We're just trying to move everything along. Yeah, I just saw what we had to do, like a thirty-day.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, ten and twenty, or whatever we gotta do, you think, so. What, today's the twenty-first? You wanna set it for August eleventh, or?
Set it for August eleventh, give, if, um, and we'll look and make sure that that's adequate time. If it's not, we'll, we'll list it now, we'll have...
Or if we can shorten it, then we'll shorten it?
Sure.
Okay. I'll, I'll set the public hearing for August eleventh, twenty twenty.
Okay, got a motion, a second?
No, it's Marilyn's motion and I'm my second.
I'll go with that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we got the motion to, to the quitclaim deed, and a public hearing on, um...
August eleventh.
August eleventh, ten AM, ten AM, um... So all in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Got a motion, carried. Okay, next we have Paula Hazelwood, Director of Vance Southwest Iowa Corporation. Update on quarterly activity and initiatives.
Are you okay with me presenting from back here, or do you want me to?
Yeah, you're fine.
Uh, good morning. Obviously, I, I try to come in at least on a quarterly basis and update you on our project and initiative activity, and it's a little bit difficult doing it through this mask, but I guess we'll make it work. Um, so I wanted to talk about some initiatives that we have going on specifically as COVID took off in March. Um, we worked with several partners, including the city and the county, and the Council Plus Chamber and Western Iowa Development Association for the back-to-business PPE. And it took us a really long time to get the funding secured and to get everything up and running, but we finally were able to do that in mid-June. So we've been marketing that program and delivering product, which is a syrtizer like this to our local small businesses, um, as well as protective masks. In addition to that, there is a consumer confidence piece to it that we've implemented with Matt's team at Public Health, and basically, when they fill out the application, they let us know if they would like to have a visit from Public Health. We have had some companies that have chosen to do that, which I think is a great thing, and then we make those referrals to Matt and his team. In addition to that, we also have several resources available for businesses through the Small Business Development Center, who are one of our partners in this initiative as well, and we've been able to refer several businesses to them. So, we will continue to market it. We have an allocation of funding that will allow us to provide these products to, um, and a, a lot of businesses, and so today, we've delivered to thirty businesses. We had a little bit of a glitch with the, where the product was located and how our staff and partners go about picking it up and delivering it because it had to be moved out of the courthouse due to construction. So Matt Wyon is currently working on a relocation of those products, I think, to the recycle center in Oakland. And so we will be able to easily go out and work with Tom to, to gather the, the products that we need to deliver those to our small businesses. Um, in addition to that, we've had a couple of other programs come online. The city of Council Plus received a sizable CNDG grant through the CARES Act, and it, they've formulated, there's a lot of rules and restrictions that have to be in compliance with that program. But they have, um, today put out a, um, the official application we received yesterday. So our organization, Vance Southwest Iowa Corp., and the Small Business Development Center are administering the business side of that program for the city. So, again, if you know of small businesses that are in need, in need of assistance, this would be a financial grant for those that are eligible, please refer them to either of those agencies. And then, um, the third piece is another one that came down from Iowa Economic Development recently, and I don't even think it, it's out there, but I don't think it's been marketed much yet. They are doing a small business relief grant, um, to those companies that have been affected by COVID that have been unable to pay their utility bills. So there's a grant, or there's an application process that goes along with that. Those applications are submitted to Iowa Economic Development, and then, uh, the Small Business Development Center locally are doing the review. But our Small Business Development Center won't be reviewing applications from Potawatomi County. They'll be reviewing applications from other counties across the state. It's just a joint effort in the, in the review. So if you guys would like any additional information, I'm happy to forward that to you. And then the final initiative is Shop Iowa. Um, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, along with, uh, the small, the state Small Business Development Center, have, um, implemented a program for small businesses that they are paying their subscription for one year to the Shop Iowa website, meaning they can upload twenty-five of their products. Um, our role locally here is to help the businesses prepare if they have not shipped product in the past. Um, there's some guidelines that they need to follow. We can help them get the shipping materials that they need and, and, uh, also make sure that they have return policies and those things in place before they actually launch their information. So, um, we'll be promoting that along with all of these other... So we'll be promoting that. Along with all of these other initiatives, we'll continue to do that moving forward. So Vance went into twenty twenty with a really robust program of work. And thankfully, we've been able to accomplish most of those goals despite the environment of which we're living today. But one of the main goals was to implement a fund development campaign so we could grow our programming and our initiatives. We were scheduled to launch the first week in April, but obviously, that did not happen due to the circumstances. So we pushed it back, but we were able to launch it mid-June. And the reasoning is, is that, you know, we, our organization, we completely appreciate the funding that we received from both the county and the city. And we hope that continues with the partnership that we have. But we also want to be able to enhance some of the programs and services, and we don't always want to have to come back to the county and the city to ask for additional funding. So we implemented the fund development campaign. It went out on June thirtieth. We did it virtually because initially, we were scheduled to do everything in person, but we did it virtually in a creative way, and we've gotten really good feedback and response. So we've already raised about half of the fifty thousand dollar goal that we implemented at the beginning of the year, which I think is pretty good considering what's going on these days. And we have a follow-up that will go out next week to the businesses that we have not heard from. So we really were selective in the group that we chose because we wanted to make sure we were not trying to fund develop from businesses that were being affected by COVID. But we have a lot of businesses on the opposite end of that scale that actually have their revenues have increased during this time. So we were very selective. It was about thirty businesses, and we've heard back, like I said, from about half of them thus far. So we'll continue to move forward on that. Our office did do a major pivot in March. We've been working, it's me and three staff members. We've all been working remotely since March sixteenth. But we continue to reach out to businesses, and we put a really, really robust effort into reaching out to the small businesses and have contacted over three hundred of them thus far. And the main reason is to obviously find out how they're doing, offer assistance, and then connect them to the various initiatives and resources that we are helping to administer. Project meetings to date, we have a really good pipeline of projects that, most of them, they haven't skipped a beat during this entire, the last four months, so we're really happy to report that, and I'm going to walk you through some of those. Year-to-date, though, we've conducted approximately a hundred project-specific meetings. Most of those were done in person prior to March sixteenth, and then we've converted to, obviously, online platforms after that and have been continuing those meetings as we move forward. You guys already talked about the one hundred ninety-second Street development. That is a project that I've been working with, the developer Jason Armstrong, since October of twenty seventeen. So I want to thank specifically Matt Wyon and his team and all of you for your support. It's a really good small industrial project for the county. It's hit some bumps in the road along the way, but we've been able to thankfully prevail and move that project forward. And the, after all of these documents officially get signed, I have already reached out to Jason about putting some marketing materials together. We've just created a new site development sheet that we will be utilizing for marketing that site. And well, as soon as that's finished, I'll make sure that you guys get a copy of it so you can see it. We have several large projects specific to the City of Council of Love's that we're currently working on, largely in the logistics and manufacturing sector. We had an in-city visit on June the eighth from a very large warehouse distribution company, and we're still in the running for that project. And surprisingly, we have a in-city visit tomorrow from from a manufacturing company that is looking at an existing building that is in the city. So obviously, so the company that's coming in tomorrow, they are international, but they have hired a group out of Atlanta to come in tour the building so they can keep the project moving forward, which we offered virtual. We have a drone. We would have gone in and flown, you know, the property and then, you know, tried to do a virtual. But they wanted a team to actually come in and physically kick the tires of the building, which I appreciate. I mean, and they should do that. And I think, from what I've been told, we are the only Iowa community being considered, which is good news. And the building that they're looking at is a really, really good fit for their operation. So we're hoping to move that forward. Applecam, which is the company that you, the county, stepped up and helped us match the grant for, for the targeted jobs program. They have officially moved to their Nebraska Avenue location. We have those funds sitting in a specific pot for allocation. As they achieve their goals of hiring the staff, then their funds will be administered. So just so you know, that is all taken care of. And then we have several other projects that we're working on. One of those is the former XTL site on Twenty-Fourth and Vents Highway. We, it's under new ownership. The new owners are very easy to work with. And we have a couple, we have that exact site submitted for a couple of the larger projects that we're working. So the activity is continuing. It's robust. What has continued to surprise me is that we've gotten some of, two of these larger projects during this whole, these last four months. So if that tells you anything right there, you know, people are moving a lot of product right now. E-commerce is, you know, through the roof, and they need places to put their product. And we're in a very strategically well-located position here with Interstate eighty and twenty-nine. So we're receiving a lot of interest regarding warehouse distribution in the logistical sector. Shalimar could not be here with us today. Usually, she would come and provide the roll side of the equation. She's under the weather, so she's resting today at home. But I will, she did want me to let you know that, you know, she's been a big part of this outreach that I mentioned earlier, and she's on the phone literally all day long, reaching out to these businesses. But she did want me to mention that the new coffee shop, Destination Coffee and Cuisine in Oakland did open to rave reviews. She wanted me to thank Supervisor Wickman for attending. She is in contact with the business owners, and they have had just a tremendous outpouring of support for their their new small business, which is exciting. If you don't know, it's where Blimpies used to be on Highway fifty-nine in Oakland. So they've converted it beautifully. If you're out in Oakland, please stop by and see them. And then on the entrepreneurial side of the equation, Nikki Ferguson, she's our manager of entrepreneurial development. She is working with a rum distillery that is in the county, out towards the Creston area. And hopefully, that she's working with Matt Wyon and his team on some specifics regarding a tasting room. So we've got activity all over the place. It's good. I'm pleased with the progress, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I also want to thank John Rasmussen. I've been working with him. He's been a big integral part of Armstrong getting all of the iDOT stuff finalized. And I constantly apologize to him because they keep coming back for more information. And he's just handled it beautifully and gotten them everything that they need. So thank you, John. Any questions?
No, thanks, Paula. It's just.
Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome.
We're just, you know, don't know what the landscape's going to be like, so.
No, we don't. And I, you know, because there's no, we have no in, so it's hard to predict what the economic impact of everything's going to be. I mean, we've, I've obviously been following numbers and different things, but it's, you know, it's hard to predict. I'm just thankful that we do have all of this activity right now.
Yeah, we're gonna hopefully, in the next week or two, look at our revenues and where we're at as an organization and see what we gotta do to keep everybody hopefully afloat.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Paula. Tim, did you have anyone to say?
Nothing.
No, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that last question. Paula.
Just said we haven't looked at our county numbers and see where we're at as an organization.
All right, well, thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Okay, next, there's no action to be taken on this one, so. John Rasmussen, you're next. We have a discussion decision to schedule a public hearing to consider the plans, specifications, form of contract, and total estimates for the proposed Hancock Roads Maintenance Facility.
There was, we never got anything on that.
Did you have something? Did you submit anything to?
I thought it was going to be August fourth, but I don't know how that worked on your calendar.
Wait, you're saying that's when you want the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, did you get any information at all for us?
I'll present the public hearing as far as the contract, the plans, and a couple of presentation items.
Okay, so I guess I'll make a motion for August fourth, at ten o'clock.
Okay, got a motion for August fourth at ten AM? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a second?
But if there's any documents that are available, it'd be nice to have them so we don't have to wait till August fourth to see them. It's time to review them anyway.
Is there a reason the board can't review these documents prior to this public hearing?
No. I don't have the contract ready. The plans, the specifications should be ready for you to review.
It'd be disregard for us to see them when you do get them.
We have, we have a contract with that guy, right?
Right. Okay, you got a motion, second, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carried. Is anyone from sheriff's office here, out there? Can you grab?
Well, which call?
We got Scott. I just, well, I have Rob listed here, so I want to make sure.
Oh, thanks, John.
Leave him out if you wanted to be in here.
I don't know if he was going to be on vacation or not, so.
Thanks, John.
It doesn't matter. We're fine. Okay, so.
Tiffany and Louis are even.
We have.
Out there.
We have an absent member of the sheriff's office. It's Captain Miller, captain of the Council of Love's Police Department. Discussion decision to approve and sign Resolution sixty-eight twenty twenty. It's a resolution to authorize a chairman to sign an inter-local agreement between the City Council of Love's and County of Potawatomi, Iowa, with respect to the twenty twenty BRIN Justice Systems Grant, the JAG grant, program award.
So moved.
Okay, you've got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion on this one?
It's the annual JAG grant. We do it every year. The dollar mountain is set by the federal government. It's operated, run by the police department. We split it fifty-fifty with the county, so this year's grant, sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Is that what it is this year?
Yeah.
Is that the whole?
Is it going down?
It's gone down significantly over the years. It was over a hundred twenty thousand dollars about ten years ago.
I'm saying it keeps on going down.
Last year, it was about eighteen-one, eighteen-two, somewhere in there.
I didn't know if it was with this environment we're in, if we wouldn't put more money into that, but. So sixteen-nine, you said?
Yep.
Okay. And it's specific to what it can be used for then?
Traditionally, we both buy equipment with it, but it can be used for some law enforcement-related building equipment, things like that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. I guess with that, we'll call.
Chairman Schultz?
Aye.
Supervisor Groby?
Yes.
Mel?
Hi.
Drew?
Hi.
And the Wickman? Is Wickman still there?
Hi.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Okay. Next, we have Mo Money, I mean, sorry, Bob Anderson, Director of Communications. Discussion decision to approve and authorize a chairman to sign right-of-entry agreeing permission for Verizon Wireless to enter a certain property owned by the county. Pretty kind of dry. I guess they just need to service some things they need.
Yeah, actually, what it is, it's Verizon approached the sheriff's office some months back. They're interested in putting some equipment on an tower that we own, so. With that, they want a right-of-entry. That way, they come on, do some testing on the property and inspections and so forth prior to doing any, making any offers. So hopefully, they will make an offer, and we can make money out of spending.
So they're going, they're going to all the sites?
No, this is the only one they have approached us on, was this Carson site.
Okay, just one of the sites?
Yeah.
Okay. And is that, is that a site that we own, or do we lease it?
No, we own that site.
Okay. So then, after their whatever, due diligence, then they're going to come back potentially with something?
Yeah, I've spoken with Leanne, and it's her recommendation, we wait for them to present a contract to us.
Okay.
Or.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you have a motion, second?
Second.
Seconded by Marilyn.
You, I mean, you looked at the right-of-entry agreement, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Got a motion carried.
Do you need a copy, or do you need, does one to sign, or do you have one to sign?
I probably will assign Jack's staff, the signature that I'm supposed to be signing as we go.
What we have to do as we go, but we got a bunch.
I can sign the other one and get you a copy, if that works.
Okay.
Now we got to sit here and wait for me.
We got a bunch of signings today, I think.
Yeah. I should have been passing them around, though. Next, we got Don Uleg, Director of Southwest Iowa Juvenile Attention Center. Discussion decision on the COVID-nineteen testing procedures for juveniles housed at the Southwest Iowa Juvenile Attention Center.
I spoke with Don this morning, and we've talked, we had some public health help them out in a pinch at the beginning. But what the center's really kind of needing is a medical director to be able to sign off on those tests. So what we kind of referred them to is that they could potentially get Dr. Thomas to maybe extend their contract out, not only from the jail, but to be kind of, I realize that the center doesn't have a whole lot of on-call things, or people in the center all the time, but it's just something that I can't commit staff to being able to go down there all the time to test individuals as they come in or out of the facility. So with the jail nurses, we helped them out with, and got them a couple of test kits, can go down there and test some kids. Get them moved on, then that would be kind of a better way to set the program up.
I'll speak for the board. We met last Wednesday on this. We're so appreciative of everything the county could do for us and might decide to do today. They don't need a full-time doctor or a full-time nurse, and if we could tag on with you, it would be so appreciated. And Mr. Uleg is here to speak for us.
We operate under a twenty-eighty, right?
Correct.
So is that something that we can temporarily add to that, or do we need to add it to that, or, I mean, everybody's contributing to this, all the other counties, right?
Yes, correct.
So is that?
I don't know if it's, yeah, I don't know. I can speak maybe.
Is there monies? In your, I don't know your budget that well. Is there some medical monies in your budget to handle? Or is everything, it's not, everything's not free, I assume?
No, I mean, I guess maybe the idea was if there was services used from public health, you know, they could build a facility, no different than buildings and grounds or whatever.
Right.
Or attorney's office, but it's just a matter of situation. We've only had two kids tested so far, thank God.
What do you have for a population in there now?
Currently, right now, we have seven kids.
Seven?
Yeah. It's been starting to go back up a little bit. But the situation arises.
We're going to school, we're probably going to go to lunch.
But yeah, the situation has just been discussed, where, you know, the possibility to need a kid to get tested down the road. And we don't have a doctor, per se, that oversees the facility. So the twenty-eighty board just asked that, does your public health could do it? And I spoke to Matt.
Does it have to be a doctor?
You have to have a doctor that signs off on the tests, so to administer the tests. You know, we, everything our public health nurses do is under the direction and the orders or whatever you want to call them from Mike Guzman. And so that would be, really, and I have to go back to Mike, or Dr. Mike, and find out, you know, hey, are you okay with us going this way with that, which I'm sure at the time, for, you know, the time being, emergency things, he'd say, yeah, you know, we'd be okay with you doing it, but can your staff handle it? And then that's what we're running up against. It is our staff that are capable of doing it, our ends, are now going to be transitioning back out with the reopenings of schools to do their normal duties, and that's why we're trying to backfill that in with the disease investigator positions. But we're having a really hard time even finding qualified people to do the disease investigator positions. And so I'm up against, I'm coming up against a real hard staffing time, is what it is.
So what's the? Yeah, are we going to reach out to Mike, or what's our, what's the?
The best-case scenario would be is if Dr. Thomas could extend his reach over and contract with the juvenile detention center on, you know, an interim basis, or whatever that case may be, then Dr. Thomas can sign off on the administering of all those tests. Because if the state's going to require those tests to be conducted as the kids' transition. or whatever that case may be, then Dr. Thomas can sign off on the administering of all those tests, because if the state's gonna require those tests to be conducted as, as the kids transitioning out of there, or even placement homes, you know, might be going to where they're gonna start requiring, uh, tests before they go get placed in a, in a residential type facility. Then they would have that ability to have Dr. Thomas, who's already signed off on those things, and the jail nurses come down and do it, or, you know, we tried to connect them with Test Iowa, but then they're up against the, the part of that they don't really transport anybody, so then if they're gonna transport anybody, then it's the sheriff's deputy coming down or somebody to transport the kid down to Test Iowa to get tested. But so.
Well, as I say, who's gonna reach out to Dr. Thomas?
What was I saying, is that Tiffany that?
I can do that, I can reach out to Dr. Thomas.
Okay, you, you, you used him over there before or something?
Um, I've dealt with executives to him before, you know, before, but in a contract situation, so I can reach out to him.
Okay.
Okay.
So an agreement with Dr. Thomas then would be between the juvenile detention board and Dr. Thomas, but then you're also wanting to kind of borrow jail nurses, is that the thought?
We have a contract with a jail nurse.
Okay.
Trish Jones, a separate contract.
Okay.
Yeah, so she comes down and provides our nursing services.
Okay.
So that wouldn't involve the county whatsoever then if you already got the contract in place?
Nope.
Okay.
So is there's nothing we really need to do on this then or?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's not a lot more that we can do. On the public health system's stretched pretty thin right now as we are.
Uh, the only other thing I was thinking potentially was they're conveniently so close to, um, Alcare, I mean, it's, uh, not that I could throw, but I might be able to hit a golf ball to the, to the there, but if, I mean, Alcare's doing testing now.
That's the Test Iowa part that we tried to connect it with, but that's, the transportation is an issue there for them.
Alcare can't come over and?
Not right now, they haven't been able to do the remote testing with Test Iowa supplies.
Yeah, and I spoke with Alcare too, they want to come to the facility.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Being kind of a dead end everywhere Don looks.
I don't know that there's any decision or motion we need to make here today, is there?
We really wanted you to agree that it was okay for the board to.
To contact Dr. Thomas?
Yeah, to work with Dr. Thomas.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
But that would not be through the county?
No.
Okay, no, I think that's fine.
Okay.
I guess keep us posted, and we, we have a vested interest in those clients that you have there too, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, Don.
Sure.
Good luck, let me know in the head, and help, thanks, Matt.
Next, we got David Byer, Chief Lieutenant of the Comms, or a discussion decision to approve? Discussion to approve and authorize chairman to sign agreement for professional services between county GIS department and MAPPA, period of one July twenty twenty through June thirty twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Okay. Got a motion?
This is our.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can I second it? All right, discussion.
We've had this agreement for ever, right?
For quite a while ago, it's been well over a decade.
They just pay us some V yet tickets?
They, we, uh, submit quarterly reimbursement or disbursement requests based on our hours and, uh, time spent.
Okay, any other discussion on this one? All favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Morning. Well, yeah, we, we run into some asbestos, um, in the basement underneath the old comp center. Um, it was underneath two layers of tile and a layer of carpet, so we're gonna have to abate it. Um, I sent you guys the bid tab, low bid was Jamco at eight thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. And I believe, I, I spoke with Becky and we have some money in the, in the basement renovation fund that would cover the cost of that. There's also gonna be an additional cost, which is air quality monitoring during the course of the abatement process, so.
So the total would be?
Uh, the total, it's gonna be under fifteen thousand. I get billed hourly by, uh, however long it takes them, so the air quality monitor has to be there whenever the abatement crew is there doing the work. So I won't really know the cost of that until they're done. The project's slated to last five days.
So they're, they're just working like a monitor prior to deal then?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, you got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, uh, discussion. I, I just would like to, the board, to consider at some point giving Jason the threshold so that he doesn't have to come to us for stuff? I mean, this is probably beyond what I would think in my mind, but.
The issue, the issue with that is, Justin, sorry for interrupting, is, um, the state auditor requires board approval on anything that's changing the price of the contract. So if it's a change order for five thousand dollars, the state auditor has to see board approval on it, so as much as I'd like to do that, we just can't do it with state auditor.
It's been a choice, been that way too.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
We found that out with the second floor renovation.
Never mind. Guess we'll see more of you then, sales.
Uh, the other thing with this is Ronco, uh, sent me an email wanting to know if we would provide them with a certificate of insurance listing them as an additional insured on builder's risk insurance.
Oh, I would think ICAP would do that, won't they?
They will, well, we gotta know what to scope, uh, what they're looking for, the, the total cost of the project.
Well, that's all been done.
Right. And normally we, they don't do that, but they're willing to do it if.
They do it.
Right, this would be the first.
Oh, what, what is, what's drill, what's driven that then, you think?
I don't know what the driving force is behind it.
Do they, do they understand we're a public entity?
Uh, they should understand that, I know Kim's been talking to them, uh, they're wanting to, they're talking about putting a change order in for, um, damages for them, for waiting for us holding them up on their demolition because of the asbestos.
Well, that's five days.
Well, it's, it's more than that, because, uh, once we award the contract or, or the bid for the abatement, DNR and OSHA in Iowa requires a ten-day waiting period, which is basically two weeks, ten business day waiting period before we can even start abatement. So it's gonna hold them up three weeks.
Okay.
What's under that outfit that's, uh, that you're contracting with?
GMCO, J A M C O.
Okay. Eighty-eight hundred and sixty dollars?
Eight thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay.
And I can get what ICAP is doing across to.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah.
It's gonna be for the builder's risk, it's gonna be additional.
Right.
To get, add it on to the.
For the, for the, the length of the project.
Right, and the, and the cost of it.
Yeah. Or, or will they go outside of ICAP for that?
It's a possibility, but I just have to reach out to them, Jason just, uh, brought that to my attention on Friday.
Okay, no problem.
All right. All favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Jason, thanks. Okay, next we, uh.
Do you have some more?
Yeah, we got that.
Okay. Okay.
Are you representing all them, Sheriff Danker or?
The, 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 the radio, I mean, the camera project and, I do.
Thank you.
This is, this is in one of the, public hearings we did today, right? Becky? So this is, this is in one of the public hearings we did today, right?
And a mixture of what we started off in, in March, and then we just completed two more today.
Right.
We've tried to accomplish all that.
Potentially in there.
Yep.
We still need to get with Maggie on some more drilled down numbers.
So currently after today, unless there's any more new options, um, we are, we're at the point that as soon as we're ready to issue bonds for the UR or issue, and issue our twenty twenty series, which are any number of the hearings we've given ourselves authority for. And then also if we're doing the last bonding, we'll funnel that into one issuance to save on costs, but, yeah, we're, we're now ready to go. It'll be a, a discussion and a study on what you, what amount of what you actually wanna use for bonding.
Well, we, we'll talk about.
But the authority's there.
Okay, but we'll talk, and then we'll talk about that hopefully before you leave today, so.
Okay. So I'll read the, thank you, we got Jason Sykes, Director of Building and Grounds, Christine Circo, Assistant County Attorney, Carthia Coleman, Safety and Risk Manager, Sheriff Jeff Danker, Chief Deputy Rob Ambrose, which I don't know if I can see him, um, Lieutenant Andy Brown, also not here, Jail Administrator Tiffany Mass and Louis Davids, Chief Information Officer David Byer and Anthony McCartney, IT, and then discussion and decision on county security upgrades.
So on June sixteen, we prepared for the board, um, and to present this project that, uh, needs to be done sometime in the future. Um, and the board asked us to reconvene on, on the twenty-first, or just today, to kind of revisit the matter after maybe prioritizing some of the capital projects. Um, in the meantime, we were kind of honing down our bid. Um, we're just under eight hundred thousand dollars, um, to do the courthouse campus and the jail, um, with cameras and card readers. Um, there may be some, there's probably gonna be some additional costs as far as, uh, uh, switches and, uh.
What was the?
Well, the switches are included in that.
Okay.
But, uh, some desktop computers possibly.
Yeah, some computers.
Becky, when we were doing our bond talks, we were looking at breaking these into two, is that still correct?
Um, the attorney's office guides us into how to break those into the public hearings to get the authority set. But as far as when we issue bonds, we, we've now given ourselves the authority and the appropriate bonding pot, so-called. So we are, you have the potential to do all of this in this issuance.
Okay.
Is that what you were asking, did I answer you?
No, yeah, yeah, makes sense, well, we just talked originally about having like.
Eight million on John, for sure.
Last time, we, but we had it in two sections, so.
Yeah, they combined the bids and there's. There's some savings with the combination of those two bids.
Cool. Tim, you're hearing all this, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, Scott's right, we already have, um, moved forward with the, uh, public hearing on that. It's just a matter of if the board decides that, uh, they wanna include that in, in the, in our bonding, let me get ready to do it, if we do it.
Okay.
Isn't that right?
Yeah, I think so, I, I think you're, um, same page, but I think what's important to note is that they've shaved off pretty good chunk here on, by combining these, so now we're at seven hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred ninety-eight. So, I mean, that's, that's good news, um.
Well, that, that's just for the jail, is that right?
No, they combined them, so this is for both.
This is the jail and the courthouse campus, uh, both for, for card access and cameras. Um, what this doesn't contain that we had talked about in the last meeting was the jail PLC cabinet, and that's still at the five hundred sixty-four, is that correct?
Correct. Okay, so this, this doesn't have the PLC, did you hear that, Tim?
What is that, what is that?
Yeah, it's a programmable logic controller, it's the, it's the piece of equipment that, that kind of makes the locks talk with the cameras and the intercoms throughout the jail.
So is that a, would that be considered a piece that you can add on to this, or is that a piece that's gotta be part of this project?
I'm gonna chime in real quick, your six hundred thousand dollar hearing today was specifically, to not to exceed six hundred thousand, was to handle the PLC.
Okay.
It's specifically public hearing, so it's approved, it's authorized, I guess.
Okay. And that, and that bid, is that a different bid than this?
Yes.
Who, who is that outfit?
Um, Accurate Controls.
Okay, but they'll, they'll match up with this outfit, or no?
Yes.
Do, do they not talk to one another?
Well, they, all the equipment will talk to each other, but yeah, I mean, basically they'll.
That's what they told us about, is, uh, square, what they call central square, everybody will talk to everybody and it'd be going real good. And, you know, a year later, we, we're almost to good and, you know, so.
Oh, there's a lot of.
It's not, it's, it's not plug and play like, uh, we do maybe at all.
I think a PLC is gonna be a little easier than what we got going on with mobile vehicles, but, I mean.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to it, but.
Yeah.
Um, the cameras is, you know, is part of the system, um, you know, that talks, that the PLC kind of organizes all that information, you know, for an end user.
So if, if we were to say, whatever, August first, this is a go, is it three months to order the equipment or what's the, what's our timetable on?
We would have to get with the vendor on lead times for equipment, but I don't think that we, you know, we're looking at a very long lead time on a lot of it.
And then, so if they would start, how long does it take them to, to do it?
Um, I was talking with the, for the courthouse campus, we may be looking up to nine months. It's.
So can they play with what else is going on on the campus, or do we have to wait until that's done?
They would be able to do it in, in sync with it.
And then isn't that nine months to cover the, uh, there at the jail and?
I, I'm not sure, did you get a timeframe on?
I didn't get an exact lead time, but we have the current analog system in place, so the idea is to keep that up and running for as long as possible, and then shut it down as you're starting to piece in your new IP cameras.
Yeah, and one of the contingencies with our bids is that, you know, we have to be able to have the system operable every night, you know? So the doors are locked, like they should be.
So we can't really do anything on this, right? Until after the public hearing?
Well, we, we're, we're public hearing.
We set public hearings for August anyway. What did I just call?
These are done.
What?
These are done.
I think we, we can, we can approve this basically on, um, the caveat that it, it, I don't know how long these bids are good for, I guess we didn't know that, uh, that we do end up probably bonded for, but if we don't bond for it, I mean, that's moot point. Cause I don't know that we have one hundred, a million in a, what was it, roughly a million and a half, round numbers sitting around right now, but without getting the, in the year or last year, getting that's for the way. But these number, how long are these numbers good for, did?
Ninety days.
Ninety days is yours too, Louis?
It says in here thirty days, but they are going to extend that through, um, in honor of the same.
Yeah, when I talk with, uh, when I talk with them, they told me ninety days.
Okay, that is parallel.
Yep.
Technology. And did, did somebody do their research on these guys then for?
Yeah.
For references and stuff?
Yeah, we, we actually use them for the building automation system at the jail. Um, we use them for the, uh, smoke damper and relay project that we just finished up, uh, last year at the jail and sheriff's office. We do currently have a service contract with them for the building automation there too. Um, we've had, uh, good luck with them in the past.
Sure.
Hey, Gus, you got this?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, this is just to give us an update of the cost, so originally when they talked to us, it was a million dollars for the jail, and like three hundred thousand dollars for the courtroom. What, what is it now?
So we have seven hundred ninety-six combined.
Yep, eight hundred, whatever.
And then the PLC, the PLC will be separate at the, at the jail, which will be close to half a million, so you're basically, you're looking at about a million three.
So that's about what, what they originally told us?
No, they told us maybe five first time, right, or closer to that.
Well, yeah, we were including the, the PLC bid with that, this time we're just presenting the, the card access and the cameras, the video management system.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, this was, this was a discussion item only, right?
Well, this was this was a discussion item only, right?
I have listed as something going on, but.
I mean, there's there's two ways, and it's just me throwing an idea out. There's two ways that this board can move forward with that, is if they decide that to go ahead and and bond for those and include it in the other projects that we're that we're talking about, or you pay cash, or you move it to next year and budget for it. Those are the three options, in my opinion.
Well, without without giving the numbers back from Maggie on the bonding and such, it's it, you know, it's hard to say to go down that route until we see what that does for debt service.
Scott, I had a like just circle back, catch up to make.
Hold on, Tim.
Sorry, I had a call with Maggie from Spear earlier this week, Melvin and I did, just to discuss where we were, what public hearings had been held, and then I sent that subsequent email to you guys on Friday, just giving all the list. She will, depending on if if we were to issue the not to exceeds for all twelve, if there were things that changed and we don't issue all of those projects, either way, she can back us into what we pre levy for this current budget. She will back us in in our first schedule to what we've what to fit what we've already established.
Is what she is is what she's saying is um she's gonna extend it, say, well, I'm just hypothetically saying, so we're we're seven year bond bond saying, so she's so she's gonna take me to twelve years or?
That portion will be discussed when we get back to how much we're issuing, but it would be covered for what we've established.
That's what she's gonna, I guess, gonna propose. That's why I want to see.
I can ask her today to do that, to get an email out.
See those numbers before we say, yeah, go ahead and uh.
Move that from the three to the four. Yep, add those projects.
Go ahead and do it. You know.
Scott?
Yes.
You're a hundred percent correct. You know, the projects that we put um up for bonding during our budget time are the set the set the debt levy to handle those. So if we add more projects and bond more, you're a hundred percent correct. It's going to extend the payback period.
Yeah, then I, you know, when when can we, you know, potentially have a callable and stuff? So just need just need to have those discussions. Because I mean.
You'll still have control over that. It'll just be the amount of the payments each year.
Right. Yeah. So. I think when we can have that, then we can probably get back. And it sounds like we need to get something done in the next forty-five days or so, sixty days to hold these bids.
Yeah, I think.
Where they're at, but it's listening to, um, I believe it was, um, oh, was it Christine? Yeah, with the county attorney's office, how they've been exposed with some stuff that's happened out there, and I just think we better, uh.
I mean, you're basically like one camera away from not having camera, right? I mean, as far as analog systems going. You told me last time you guys had to buy in parts or something like you're not able to really.
Through the PLC, um, the the logic controller, that's, the parts are becoming very, very hard to come by. Um, and if you can locate them, they're typically used. As far as the camera system, it's it's analog, so the technology, um, they're no longer doing any upgrades to it. I do have some analog cameras as spare, but not in the sense of.
Doesn't seem like it's an over that deal set up right now, obviously, for this day and age. I mean.
Right. Well, on security.
We wanna just put this off for a little longer until we, what are you guys thinking? As far as.
I think we should.
Well, I just wanna make sure with where Maggie's gonna show us, so we all know and see what we're up against.
So that's.
I'm not opposed. I'm not opposed to moving forward with it. I think, you know, the numbers are are not insurmountable, and I think we need to get it done. I just wanna have all the information, make sure I'm not missing anything, so I don't know that.
Spear on the agenda for next Tuesday to have a discussion about all of these, and I can ask her to prepare schedules based on doing all as the the biggest case scenario.
That's fine. Okay, so there would be really no action until so next Tuesday would be a good time to probably.
Table at one week for next next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should know where we're at, and then the the do we know is, are there, do we balance out and?
We are balanced out. I have that information. I'll put myself on the agenda for that as well. We haven't done our financial report, but I have numbers, yes.
So, um, hypothetically, we could um pay some cash for some of this. I'm just speaking out loud and bond for something. So I mean, it's depending on where the numbers shake out. But I think this should be both of them, what you're asking for and what should be pretty much a top priority to get handled. Yeah. So.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
See you guys. Thanks for shaving money off that.
Yeah, thank you.
All that, that's you came out of uh, to get out of roads. I don't know. Bill, help. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so next we have Melvin Hauser, Auditor. Discussion on what?
No, I didn't know you were done.
I'm done with that one.
No, I just, it's more of an FYI for you guys. Uh, you're, well, you don't remember, because we did this fifteen years ago. We have all these images, transfer books, but they've never been indexed. And uh. I was talking, we had some vendors in giving bids on to do it a year ago, and Jamie Peterson, I thought, well, we can do this in-house. So I budgeted for part timers to come in-house. Well, that's not gonna happen. And with this COVID thing going on, it'd be nice to get those images on the uh website, so we don't have to have title searchers coming in anymore. They just be kind of a moving into the twenty-first century. So it's more of a just a FYI for you guys, so that uh when you see the bill come through, you'll know what it is. That's what we're planning to do is just get those images on uh, I'm gonna be contracting with COT Systems. The total cost is forty-three thousand to index all those tens of, I don't know, how many images you suppose are there? Tens of thousands and uh they'll get them on the website for us, and we won't have to have title searchers come in anymore, so.
So then that that, and who would have never guessed, March of this year, we would be going down this path. So that would allow us to lessen the amount of people, not that we want, government ever wants to go down that path, but when you start talking about safety and security and soundness and all those things, it makes a lot.
Yeah, well, it's just.
After going through our, and we're not even through it all yet.
Right.
Our first pandemic after being what a county for a hundred and eighty years or something. Now, what we're dealing with and it it doesn't prevent them from coming here. They'll have to be a resource for them to look them up here as well as being able to go online or not.
Uh, no, I'd like to.
Counterfacing computer.
Huh?
We can provide counterfacing computers on the outside of our office for that.
You know, and if they, there's a guy in Des Moines, he's a title searcher in Des Moines, calls Christie Hassy. She looks it up for him, takes a picture with her phone, and then uh texts it to him. That way, then he can go onto the recorder's website and look, find that book and page. So that'll eliminate some of that, and if there is an outside person that does need help, they can do it remotely and uh Christie or Linda could walk them walk them through it.
Okay, but they they would have to be have internet connection.
Yeah, well, most.
Or be at the library or lary. But then, but that's what I'm saying, does not, is it all all these professional people or whatever that you use that service, or is John Q probably come in and say?
Mostly probably ninety-nine percent of the work's done by.
Title searchers now.
Title searchers and surveyors, uh.
Okay.
Training uh district engineers. No, you might see Mary Mary Lum again might be doing some genealogical or historical stuff, but.
Okay.
Very few of those.
I don't think it would stop us from still offering the service to help them online in our office.
Right, right, right.
But it would just stop us from having an open door policy for them to come and research at our counters inside our office.
Hang out inside.
Some counties don't even, you know, they're everything's online. They don't even allow in. The books aren't even in the auditor's office anymore, so.
Yeah, okay.
But that's just kind of a little update on what uh what I wanna do with those books.
Okay.
But I didn't want you to get shocked by seeing a twenty-one thousand dollar uh claim come through and wondering what that was for.
You got you got money in your budget for that, Melvin?
Yeah, I did not budget for it specifically, but between the various line items for travel, lodging, part-time employees, it'll cover pretty much three fourths of it, and then we'll, I think we'll be able to find it.
We should be good.
I think we'll be good.
Did you get that, Tim?
Yes, I did, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, thanks, Melvin. Next, we're on to other business. Discussion decision to approve funding appropriation for support of MAPPA for fiscal year twenty twenty-one in the amount of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars payable in two installments. The first installment in the amount of twenty-two, three hundred fifty-eight due July of twenty twenty, and the second installment will be due in January twenty twenty-one.
So moved?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Is it, is this the same, you know?
We do this every year.
No, I know, I know that, but.
I'm not sure on the amount.
It seems like it used to be around the thirty.
I believe it gave us that accurate number of budget time. I believe that.
Yeah, but I'm saying like, I don't know if that was a increase from last year or not.
It usually varies within a thousand dollars.
It was an increase, but it wasn't.
Who's on the uh MAPPA board?
I am. I I was sat on that meeting. I just don't remember.
No, it's probably gone, probably gone up a little bit.
I was thinking they kept it status quo, but I don't.
I'll I'll double check it, but I'm pretty sure it went up a little bit.
Okay.
Cause I remember Greg talking about.
Cause they added some, they added another, that's why I didn't think they did it, because they added another, who'd they add? Um, CAS and?
Add more counties, you mean?
Yeah, they added more counties over there.
Yeah, we dropped a couple recently too, though, not counties.
CAS, CAS Nebraska, in Nebraska. Oh.
We dropped members. Like we got rid of a couple of school districts that weren't participating at all.
Okay, but they but they they made, um, something the state legislature over there allowed them to grab, and but these other counties wanted to be part of it, because that's why um Council Blas got all that, I'm pretty sure, a good chunk of that CBG money, because we're part of this metro area, and that's where it went to over five, when the population's over five hundred thousand, that's where all that money.
Went went to the Douglas County, but the city of Omaha didn't get any.
No, that's why, I that's what I'm saying, that you had to be over five hundred thousand. No, I don't, I I I thought it did go to the the cities that went to the county.
County got, oh, it's old. And they're still trying to argue, figure out what to spend it on.
Was that the, was, I think that was maybe was a different bucket, cause CBG money goes to the cities typically.
Well, I thought that the CARES Act money was based on the CDBG formula.
Right, for cities.
Okay.
Well, I could be wrong, but Nebraska's laws are a little different, okay.
I'll get to the number. I have it.
Okay.
I just have.
No, no, that's fine.
It's not on us.
That's fine.
Our IT department makes us change our password every three days, and I can't seem to get on my thing to pull it up.
They warn you every day for two weeks.
What was that?
You get a update, or don't you get a update from them that your password's gonna change in ten days or something?
No, I just log on. It says your things doesn't work.
No, I heard you got, I've been getting warnings for the last two weeks.
They get my PIN. They make you update your PIN and everything else, and then I have to update my password too, and then you have to update it on all your devices if you have it on, and that's where the issue lies.
Ah, well, those are county county owned devices are different than what I got.
All right, so we got a motion to second. Uh, any last discussion? All papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Discussion decision to approve twenty twenty-one matching funds requesting amount of five hundred for the Iowa Economic Development Authority, uh, funding for the western Iowa tourism region.
This is our, is this our annual?
Yeah, we pay them every year, right on the buck, just any part of the.
Yeah, we paid more before though, because remember, uh. Was it a thou, wasn't it thousands? We had Kathy Fissis doing something for us.
No, this is.
Something else.
I think this is different one. This is a multi-county one, right?
Well, this is all of western Iowa. It's thirty-three counties.
Counties.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion to come out of gaming.
Okay, that motion for second?
Second.
Motion second for this to come out of gaming, new discussion. All papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. All right, last, we got a discussion decision to approve ISAC supervisory dues for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved?
Please, your second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion. All favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. That's it. That's all we have left. If there's anything else for the group, otherwise I'll entertain motion adjourned.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And all favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye, motion carried. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tim.